Good evening. We're ready to begin. The Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting laws. We are live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Chair Truesdale.
Present.
Vice Chair Ellsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Goings.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Trowbridge.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Present.
Commissioner Flankis.
Here.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in the agendas concerning our actions, the appeal, and review, if appropriate. Please read carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. We have a motion for the minutes of January 28th.
Yes, I'll move for approval of the minutes as outlined.
Any comments?
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll be abstaining on this because I wasn't present at that meeting.
Okay. If there are other comments, please cast your vote. And those are approved with Commissioner Flankis abstaining. Any items from the Planning Commission staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Let's move on to the housekeeping items. Are there any items for the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, there are no items requested to be withdrawn or abated.
Okay. Thank you. There are no consent items, so we'll go to our one-motion-one-vote items. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine non-public and public hearing items. All public hearing and non-public hearing items will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions, all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have these items removed from the agenda. We have Item 6, EOT 37243, applicant owner, Richard P. Brooks, and Grishel G. Neshick, requests for an extension of time to allow a six-foot rear yard setback where a 15-foot rear yard setback is required for a proposed 1,435 square foot addition to an existing single-family residence at 5780 Speaking Rock Avenue. Item 7, TMP 37217, Washington Paycos, applicant owner Rebel Oil Company, for a one-lot commercial subdivision at 3505 East Washington Avenue. These items were advertised as a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on these items? Seeing no one close to public hearing?
There are no comment. I'll move for approval of the one-motion-one-vote items.
There's a motion for approval. If there are other comments, cast your vote. And those are approved.
Both are final action in the absence of an appeal within seven days.
Okay. And now, we're going to take one item out of order. We're going to go to Item 19, SUP 37198, applicant owner Jay Shikkuan and Jai Buongkwan et al. to add a gaming establishment, general business-related use for gaming machines within an existing convenience store at 1600 North Martin Luther King Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds the use can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with surrounding land uses and recommending approval. If denied, the proposed use will not be permitted at this location. Please note, we have received additional protests and letters of support since publication.
Good evening.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioners, Nathan Taylor representing the applicant. We accept all of staff's conditions and would appreciate approval on this item. I'm here to answer any questions.
These items were, this item was advertised as a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one close to public hearing. Commissioner Goings?
I was by the store this morning. It seems to be all neat and in order.
Yeah, they do a good job over there.
Pretty familiar with it.
This will bring in some additional revenue form. They could use it right now.
Very good. No more comments and questions. I'll move for approval of Item 19, SUP 37198, subject to all staff's recommendation condition.
No further questions, please cast your vote.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
And that is approved.
It goes forward to City Council on April 7th.
Items 8, 9, and 10 are related items. Item 8, VAR 36958, applicant owner Sharon Roth, to allow four parking spaces where nine are required at 708 North Jones Boulevard. Companion item, number 9, Review of Condition 36960, which required a comprehensive site development plan to illustrate the location of joint driveways, joint parking, and access agreements. Items 10, SDR 36959, for the proposed conversion of a single-family residence to a 1,770-square foot office medical with waivers of the perimeter landscaping and buffer requirements to allow a zero-lot buffer along the west perimeter where 15 feet is required, a zero-foot buffer along the north and south perimeters where five feet is required.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
We're going to let staff go first.
Mr. Chairman, the request is for the proposed conversion of an existing single-family residence to a medical office. Since the previous abeyance of this item or revised landscape plan has been submitted depicting additional trees in existing planning areas along the north perimeter and the front yard, and along the north, south, and east perimeters in the rear yard, reducing the exception request for perimeter trees to six where 20 are required. The proposed site will require a parking variance with four spaces provided where nine are required, one of which is a van-accessible handicap space. Staff is recommending denial of the request for parking variance and site development plan review as the site will not have adequate parking, and request for waivers and exceptions of the required perimeter and parking lot landscaping will result in a lack of buffering between the commercial site and the adjacent single-family residences. Staff is recommending an approval of the request for review of condition as the subject conditions were approved for the cooperative development of nine lots along Jones Boulevard and have limited applicability to the development of this individual lot. In addition, the resolution of intent to rezone along with the associated conditions has expired for seven out of the nine lots included in the previous rezoning action. If denied, the site will remain as a single-family residence. Please note that protests have been received for this item since publication.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Ms. Director, Planning Department, thank you for all the help that you have shared to us. My name is Andrew Chan, and I'm here to assist my good friend, Dr. Sharon Roth, who is the owner of this property. After we have come here last month, we have heard all your comments, and we tried to act upon them. First is perhaps what the whole purpose of this project would be along Jones Boulevard, considering all the past problems that have been experienced there. We'd like to say that if we proceed with this project, this would become a professional office. This would be an improvement in the community. We think that it can aid the neighboring properties. Perhaps they would be inspired in bringing together more economic development, although it may be in a microeconomic scale. We'd also acted upon the parking concerns. We've tried to emphasize now that there are two additional parking spaces actually within the property. We are just not able to add it to the parking count because it would be considered as tandem parking. We've also liked to point out...
I'm sorry, it cannot be read.
We've also liked to point out that this office actually employs only one employee, which is Dr. Roth herself. Previously, we have not been able to communicate it properly. The whole commission and the Planning Department were thinking that it is a doctor plus two additional employees. We'd like to correct that, please. Now, the parking analysis would be simpler in that sense. You have a single doctor who only takes appointments. Every visit to her is by appointment only. She operates from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the afternoon, and there are no overlaps that are possible. If we think that that's the best-case scenario, then we would only need one parking space for her patient and a parking space for her. If we now push the spectrum to the worst-case scenario, we should probably try at least one parking space overflow. That would require three spaces now. We have actually, still have four parking spaces on the site. Dr. Roth, too, being the singular employee, can even park in either two of the parking spaces inside the property. So you have four open spaces plus two tandem parking slots. Another concern that was pointed out to us was whether we've accommodated ADA parking spaces, and the answer is yes. The access is onto the right side, which is the south side of the property, straight from the sidewalk, as you would have an immediate access from the sidewalk to the house and immediately also to the parking space.
Can you point to the drawing on there? Because we can't see what you're pointing on on the screen. There you go.
So we have access from the sidewalk going straight to the property, and the immediate parking slot is an ADA-accessible space. That is actually one of our immediate concerns. Dr. Roth being an alternative medicine doctor, the most common patients she gets would be pain-related patients, so of course, we'd like to accommodate that immediately. Another concern would be the traffic impact along Jones Boulevard. If we try to now imagine the lessened parking space requirements, still, we've tried to accommodate a backing space. That allows us to prep up to prepare the car coming out of her property to Jones Boulevard without adding any more cars lining up along the street. So that means that this space, this car, once it's inside a property, cannot actually add more to the traffic along Jones Boulevard until it's already vacant or until there's a space for it to come out. So if we imagine again, there's only one patient per hour, there cannot be more because she is the only one who can treat that patient. If you ever have two cars coming in, there's one that's waiting, there's still just one coming out. And if ever again, there's this worst-case scenario, there's a backing space available for these cars before they get to Jones Boulevard. We'd like to address now the next concern, which would be the community appeal. This is the current look of the property, and we understand it is winter time. In springtime, the leaves aren't really at their best condition. We understand also that we are taking up the existing landscaping and that we're also taking out an existing tree. All this is because of some space constraints. We are very tight. We are trying not to demolish the residential property that's being converted. In spite of that, we'd like to point out that we are putting in the same amount of trees that we have taken out. The type of trees that we are proposing are actually more appealing than before.
You can speak from right there because those two mics in the middle are on.
Oh, great, thank you. And we'd also like to point out that the front of the property is now going to be much improved with new Hawthorne shrubs. Compare the proposal of more greenery in the front of the house to the current one, which is only grass. We're also taking into consideration the recommendations of the Planning Department, saying that we need to provide buffers along three sides. So we've tried to do that as much as we could. In the back, we've put in two new trees, two additional trees, as much as we could. We've put an additional tree on the north side and also on the south side. For us, these four additional trees are not there. The only one that we have in the back is actually one existing tree, which we are not cutting down. We'd like to keep that. So aside from the additional trees, we are also putting in some additional shrubs.
You've read all of staff's conditions of approval?
Yes, sir.
And you're in agreement with all the staff, all the conditions if approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's open this up to the public hearing, and then I'll give you some time to respond. Anybody wish to speak on this item, please come forward.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I'm real disappointed in this. On item number nine, it says, "The location of joint driveways, joint parking, and access agreements." And I believe that that is what should take place. I think that they should get together with their neighbors, like some of them have, and have the parking in back where they can have some kind of decent landscaping. He's showing some trees there, but, come on, I mean, that isn't, that isn't right. I mean, it just lacks too much. And I know what a terrible problem that we're having with these houses, but I really believe that the only solution is to have the parking in back and have joint agreements with their neighbors so they can work, so they can work this out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one close to public hearing. Doctor?
Well, my name is Dr. Sharon Roth. Is this Sam?
Yep.
If you can hear me. And just in regard to the comments of the last gentleman, last I checked, a number of those properties were in foreclosure. They're between owners, and arranging joint agreements is just difficult at this time. And certainly, I'm eager to get started with improving the whole area, and so I'm not sure how tenable it would be at this juncture to have a joint agreement.
Okay.
Did you have any other questions for me about the nature of my practice or how it all fit in terms of the timing? I see one patient at a time. It's usually an hour and a half each.
I think, I think we received most of those questions at our last meeting. One question I have for staff, and then we'll turn over to the commission. Is there a possible way for people to drive to this? You know, is there enough room on the side to get additional parking in the rear of the building and circulate it all?
Mr. Chairman, there is not enough room for drive lanes on the side of the building.
Okay. All right. I'll turn over to the commission. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ellsworth?
I, you have done a very good job at trying to make something out of this, but candidly, I don't like it. I don't like it because I don't want to see the, I don't want to see commercials spill north of 95 there. Because what's going to happen is it's going to become a mess, like we have south of 95, and I don't like it. I don't think it's, it's the right place. Although your arguments are well-taken, and I do recommend, I mean, I do commend you for the efforts you've made, but I feel like we're trying to, what's the old saying? Force a square peg in a round hole, and I don't, I don't like it. I think we're trying to squeeze something onto this site that the site wasn't originally built for. I mean, if this is what we're going to do, we convert a home over, it's just not going to fit. It doesn't work. I sympathize with your position. I see you're only going to see patients one at a time, and I respect your practice and so forth, but I just don't see it as this being the right place for this area. There are a lot of other places in town right now that you could go to that it does fit, but this one, I don't, I don't like it. I don't, I don't think it fits, and so I don't think I can support it this time. I'm anxious with my fellow commissioners have to say, but those are my initial thoughts. And I don't expect you to respond. I just wanted to tell you my thoughts, if the chairman so indicates, but I just wanted you to understand where I'm coming from here and why I have these perspectives that I do. I just don't think it fits this location.
I see. May I respond, Mr. Chairman? Oh, not yet?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I understand your concerns. When we looked at this property for purchase, it was already zoned PR. So because of the zoning that was already in place, we were under the impression that these kinds of issues had been taken into account already, and that it was the will and desire of the city to start making these properties professional residential, or professional and spaces. So that was why we chose this property. And because of, because of that, we've been trying so diligently to make something that is zoned PR usable PR. And while my neighbor, my neighbor exactly to the north does have adequate space on the side of his property, I think, to, may I show you a photo? Does that show up? Oh, right there. That's my neighbor's property, right north of mine. This is the wall that goes between, and that's my property right there. And I think his amount of space would be adequate, and when he is ready to convert, to have similar ideas, I think they're going to have no trouble getting parking in the rear, having a lovely landscape in the front, and, you know, being able to conform to your wishes that much more. It's just that, at this time, because the property we purchased was already zoned PR, and it doesn't have that ability to park in the rear and to have the lovely landscaping the way we'd like it to, we still thought that this was the city's wish, because it was zoned that way already. And we certainly are still open to any other suggestions if we could make it work, because this is where I'm going to spend every day of my life, really, going to work every day. I certainly want it to be lovely from the outside, easy to access. It certainly would not behoove me to make it difficult on my patients to get in, for it to be an eyesore, that would not do myself or my practice or the community any good, and certainly is not my intention. So I'm, I'm very eager to work in any way possible to make, to make this PR-zoned property able to be used as PR.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes. Can you put the picture up again of the parking with the ADA spot? And can you tell me if that is a spot where the person is going to be driving forward and then backing out? Am I correct in saying that? They drive in, they drive into this spot, and then they have to back out of this spot?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Into the backing space.
And then, what if this is a disabled van where the person has to come out on the side? Number one. And number two, this is something I live every day, and I know how difficult putting my son in this vehicle and backing out and trying to get onto Jones would be. It would be difficult. It would be impossible. When you called me the other day, Dr. Roth, you said you don't want to see any surprises here today, and that was the first thing out of your mouth. Everybody up here will tell you that I just want to wave the wand and have it work for you, but the problem is, and I believe in your medicine, I use your medicine, the problem is, this space is too small for the parking, number one. It's going to be dangerous. You're going to end up probably with even, I mean, I could barely get my car onto Jones at 9:45 Monday morning, and it was one car in that parking area. The landscape issue that I had with you was in the west, and you're talking about everything you're going to do at the north and the south and in the back. Once this commission decides and the city council decides that this corridor is ready for, for commercial, and I, and I'm sorry that this piece is zoned PR and you purchased it PR, you, whoever is first has to be the shining star example for the rest of the block, and I told you that as well the other day on the phone. And by being that example, then whoever comes after you has to meet your standards. And unfortunately, starting this way, we're going to end up what we had, like my friend, Mr. Farlow, said, on the south part of Jones. It's my job to represent Ward 1 and to be diligent that everything we do from this day forward makes the ward look better and be better. And by starting this way, even though I hate to tell you, it's just not going to work on this piece, and you will not see my support tonight.
Any other comments?
May we respond?
No, no, we're not going to do that. Commissioner Trowbridge?
Just in an attempt to see if there's some way we can work our way through this particular project, let me ask you, are you familiar with a property that's merely adjoining you that showed the picture? Do you know the owner?
I met him briefly when I was visiting the property, actually.
And while it's not a commitment, obviously, is it your feeling that his intent is to make that a commercial site also?
It was. From what I could tell, that's what they were interested in doing. Right now, I know, I think that they own the property both immediately adjacent north and south, two properties. I believe so. Right now, I know that the one south is a rental, that there's a tenant in there, and the one north is pretty well boarded up when we're looking at kind of the surrounding. This is, this is the neighbor's front yard. There's, I don't know if it shows up clearly on your screen. It's a strip of concrete and then nothing, really. I'm not sure what that is.
If they can't see, we'll just show them.
And this is the properties, the house is boarded up. You can?
If you put it on the center, we can, it comes on the screen for us.
You know, I realize it's a difficult parcel to deal with, and I certainly am sympathetic to your position where you bought a piece of property that's, that's zoned professional. I also am unaware of a lower-intensity professional use, which would require less parking. And so when someone comes forward and says, "I bought the property with the understanding it was for professional use, and I'm coming forward with the lowest-demanding professional use, which has minimal requirements for parking, and it still just doesn't fit," I think there's a situation where concessions need to be made, and I would be willing to entertain a discussion, perhaps, that if we would go forward with some kind of a approval that has a pretty strong condition on it, that in, we look at this again in a period of time, say, two-year timeframe, with the goal that the economy might have changed and the properties adjoining you one side or the other, I wouldn't want to lock you in, also want to come forward and go professional. At that point in time, the block wall between you and the parcel to the north of you, I believe, that block wall could come down. You could have fairly easy access, and both of you could park in the back, eliminating what I personally feel is some unreasonable demands and expenses being placed onto the landscape of your backyard that's not going to be used unless you're going to be having employee picnics for yourself in your backyard, and that doesn't seem like it just makes sense to have a lot of expense in the backyard. I would rather see some kind of a suggestion being made at this level, but within the next two years, work out some kind of deal with your neighbor where both of you have joint access to both of your backyards, and those backyards... those backyards can easily accommodate six to eight parking places. And in the front, you could have easily accessible handicap parking, and mobile patients and you could park in the back, and that would leave plenty of land to have an attractive front entrance. Also, at the same time, you could take your two garage doors, inexpensive construction projects to stucco those in, and you've got access to the inside of your offices. And so you pick up two more decent-sized storage spaces or something, and it would be a much nicer-looking project at that point. But it's something that we're...I don't know if we could get any kind of consensus on making all this fit together.
If I may, the...were the requests to be approved today, the commission can't condition the applicant to make subsequent changes upon a change of ownership or some future action. So if it's approved now, the conditions would have to be appropriate to this parcel now, and if you wanted a review of whether or not they were in compliance in the future, but that would be the only issue as to whether they were in compliance, not some future improvement, because that's beyond the scope of the application in front of you.
I understand.
Any other comments? This is very unfortunate. This is a site that, I understand, you're trying to do everything within your power, but when this came before us before, it...we had tried to anticipate the same problems that you're experiencing, and that's why the conditions were to have these properties come forward together. And I agree with staff. You know, everybody isn't unified now, so the condition is difficult to...your review condition is probably appropriate, but without it, I don't see how we get to where you can come close to meeting the requirements that are going to be necessary to make it safe in and out of this property. It's unfortunate. It definitely is, because I think what you're planning to do is probably the kind of PR use we want, but if people can't park in the back, it's parking deficient, and their only real circulation is to back out on that right-of-way. And I just think that's a dangerous situation. So I don't know what the commission's pleasure is. Commissioner Quinn?
May I ask one more question?
One quick question.
If I speak with the neighbor again, and he is amenable to some sort, immediately to some sort of change in the makeup of the property or parking easement, or something along those lines with his property, which I showed you.
I honestly believe if you can if you can work out a cooperative access agreement and shared parking, you know, like we anticipated where people can get to the back of the property, you could solve about eighty percent of the problems. And I don't know, can't speak for the rest of the commissioners, but I think you'd answer, you could answer most of my concerns, and you'd have a property that you could, at least I would support your development of it. But without it, it's...that's why I asked if there was able to people to get to the back. It's just...it's important.
Right now, it's not possible the way it's structured.
But we have two...we can, you know, we'll take a motion here, or the only other thing is we could have this table till some future date that you...what?
Six months.
You need to have six months to work out something with your neighbor and bring it back. And that's, I think that's probably better than where I think this is headed for you.
I think that's a really good idea, because all of us want to work with you.
Your neighbor's going to have the same problem that you're having, but...
If you don't work together, he's not going to be able to work without you, and you're not going to be able to work without him.
Yeah, he may have, I mean, you're both, I mean, it's PR, it is what it is, but his building's bigger. For him to park it and come back in, if he, if there's some cross, we're not going to be too keen on giving him some benefit that you don't have.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, let me make one other comment briefly to you. Just understand where I'm coming from. That lot is not made for this. The house that's on there is not made for it. And I recognize we have financial constraints, but if you really want to do something on this lot, you want to see my support, tear down that building, build a smaller building in, make it look nice, make it look like a professional place. I don't like houses or businesses that look like they're in a house. If you're going to work with the neighbor, wonderful, but come to us with something that looks like a professional office area rather than houses that are converted. It is PR, but just because it's zoned PR, it doesn't mean we're going to leave the same houses there and everything, just look the same. Now you can just operate a business out of the house. That's not the intent of the zoning. The zoning is, hey, well, lots become professional, but you still have to meet the other requirements. And what you've come in and said is, we want it, we want to change the parking, we want to change the landscaping, all so that you can basically leave it alone and run your business out of it. That's what I see. Oh, and asphalt most of the front of it there so that you can park. And that's not acceptable, not in my world. I just, I just think, no, look, let's make it look good. If we want to do that, great, but let's do it right. Let's do it right from the beginning, so that we don't, like Commissioner Quinn said, be the example here. Show us how it's to be done and do it right, and the others will follow. But if we just throw something out there and it just sort of, then everyone's going to follow the same example, and we don't want that. We want to make it look good, make it look right. Okay?
Dr. Roth, what is your pleasure, to hold it for six months or for us to vote no?
It would be tabling it.
It'd be tabling it for six months.
She'd have to come back and ask for it to be brought back on the agenda.
That means you have to reapply with your neighbor and come to back to us.
It's not a reapply, it's just notify staff that she's ready to go forward and put her back on the agenda.
Okay.
That sounds like a good kind of move. I would say, if you don't mind, that would be great.
Then, then I'll assume that's your motion to table these three items.
That's my motion. Yes.
If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. Do we have to, we can do them all in one, can't we? Please cast your vote. And those are tabled. Thank you for your cooperation, and good luck with your neighbor.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, and just for the record again, these will expire, this table will expire in six months. If she waits longer than that, she'll have to reapply.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Now we go to items 11, 12, and 13, related items. Item 11, VAR 37295, applicant-owner, Winter Properties LLC, to allow no additional parking spaces where 36 additional spaces are required at the northwest corner of Fort Apache and Sahara Avenue. Item 12, SUP 36961, to add 28, 120 square feet of building area and outside dining area to an existing 7,265 square foot supper club use at 9,500 West Sahara Avenue, and SDR 36962, for a proposed 2,036 square foot addition to an existing 6,648 square foot commercial building.
Mr. Chairman, these requests are to expand an existing supper club that is located within a larger commercial center. The additional building area will result in the need for variance for the increased number of required parking spaces that cannot be accommodated on the site. Also required are exceptions to Title 1910 Parking Lot Landscaping Requirements for the number of trees and for a buffer between the parking lot and the building. Staff recommends denial as the request is inconsistent with the requirements of Title 19, and the applicant has not provided any evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances that would substantiate the need for the variance. If denied, the site will remain as previously approved. If approved, condition of approval number two of variance, VAR 37295, should be deleted. Please note that both protests and support have been received for these items since publication.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Damon?
I'm Antonio. I'm the president of Winter Properties LLC.
And your address?
The address of the LLC.
Or your personal?
9601 Orient Express, Las Vegas.
And you've read staff's conditions, and you're in agreement with all of staff's conditions, as if approved?
Yes.
With the...
Your name?
Deletion of...oh, my name's Dwayne Eshenbaugh, 3225 Via Serranova Henderson, with striking number two off the VAR.
Okay. If there are no other comments, this was a public hearing. I'll open this up. Anybody who would speak on sign, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Do we have site plans on this? Can we have that explained to us, please? I mean, my thing is, my, basically, my question is, do they have shared parking? Are they...
They do have shared parking, and it's a monstrous center.
Thank you very much.
Whether it meets all of our criteria is really the question, but it's an existing operation that seems to function fairly well. And Commissioner Troybridge?
If there's no necessary discussion, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Okay. In regards to item number 14, variance 37295, make a motion for approval, subject to all conditions with the deletion of condition number two.
Want to close the public hearing first? Or number 11 first?
Yes, that's what I just mentioned.
Okay.
No.
[laughing]
Close the public hearing?
Public hearing is closed.
Okay, in regards to item number 11, as I had said, variance 37295, make a motion for approval, subject to all conditions with the deletion of condition number two.
There's a motion. If there are no comments, please cast your vote.
The motion is on the number 11?
Yes, it is.
Yes, that's what I said. For the third time, yes, it's number 11. And all those numbers indicate which one it is, too.
What time's that bar open?
Soon.
Never been there.
I will hope you'll change that.
And that was approved? Or did you just...
Commissioner Troybridge, in regards...
Oh. And that is approved, item 12?
In regards to item number 12, special use permit 36961, make a motion for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
There is a motion for approval. If there are no other comments, cast your vote. Item 13. This, that was approved, item 13?
In regards to item number 13, site design review 36962, make a motion for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
And if there are no other comments, please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, this is a Bertolini's, right?
Ex-Bertolini, correct.
An ex-Bertolini's?
Yes.
And what's going in?
It's called Siena. It's an Italian restaurant also. We moved, we purchased the pad and basically the business from Bertolini beginning of December. That's when escrow closed.
Thank you. Just for the record, my colleagues and our staff here are like members of the Donner Party. You'd think that you might want to let us know what kind of food you're serving.
Point taken.
13, that is approved, and these will go on to city council on April 2nd, 7th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we go to items 14 and 15, related item. Item 14, VAR 37296, applicant-check city owner Becker and Sons, to allow 119 parking spaces where 132 spaces is required at 1990 North Rainbow. Item 15, SUP 37153, to add a jewelry store class three use to an existing 3,204 square foot or 40 square foot auto title loan and financial institution.
Mr. Chairman, staff is unable to support the requested variance for parking as a jewelry store class three has a more intense parking requirement than the existing use. If the application is denied, the associated special use permit cannot move forward and must also be denied, and the use would not be established at this location. Please note, we have received additional protests since publication.
Good evening.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Before you start, I'd like to ask a quick question. Is Ernie Becker Jr. a part of this action or part of this group that's here before the commission tonight?
Mr. Ernie Becker Jr. did file an application. Barry Becker filed an application also, and subsequent to that, Ernie Becker Jr. filed one also.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, out of abundance of caution, I'm going to have to abstain on this matter.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
Oh, do you, you have a...
Yeah, the reason for my abstention is I had extensive litigation against Mr. Ernie Becker a few years back, and so out of abundance of caution, I'm going to abstain.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Madam Director, staff, nice to see you all again. This application, these applications before you were very similar to applications that I understand you saw last month. I think there was one at Washington and Rancho and Lamb and Charleston. In this particular case, I guess I should introduce myself, sorry, Gary Leabold.
And you forgot your name.
2753 Laguna Seca and Henderson, here on behalf of the applicant and on behalf of Lucy Stewart, who had a commitment tonight, couldn't be here, so she asked me to show up. Gary Leabold.
We thought you were in the witness protections program.
That's all over with now, I think. So the application before you tonight is for a jewelry store class three to be added to the existing auto title loan and financial institution specified use on the site, and then the variance on parking that accompanies it. The use is really, I think, you've probably heard all this before in the other two applications, but you've seen those television commercials where they're trying to get people to send in their broken or surplus gold jewelry, and, you know, you're risking the mail, I guess, and apparently those services pay about 10 to 15 percent of the weight value of the gold. In these types of operations, the applicant, or the, sorry, the owner of the gold comes into the store and is able to get an immediate weight for the gold.
And he gets 16 percent by walking in?
About 60 percent, I think, is what they get on this one. So it's quite a bit more than they get when they mail it in, and it's an immediate return. I'm sorry.
That's all right. And you've read all the is-if-approved conditions and are in agreement with them?
Yes, we are.
Okay. This was advertised as a public hearing. Anybody who would speak on these items, please come forward. Seeing no one, close public hearing. Commissioner Troybridge?
Yes, I have the same question relating to both items. The field check that was performed by staff on January 21 brings with it a comment that the window signage exceeds 20 percent of the window area, and that the hours of operation are posted in the storefront window indicating 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Is...what's the problem with these two situations? The 20 percent window area and the hours of operation, is there something inappropriate going on here?
Did we put any time limits?
What is the allowance for window signage?
The allowance for the window signage is 20 percent. The staff report indicates that it does exceed that and is in violation of the sign code. I'm not really sure what the hours of operation or what the concerns are with that are. Oh, 8 to 11 is the, by condition of approval? Oh, it's a standard condition approval for financial institution specified, so they exceed the hours by one hour in the morning, I guess. So they're in violation of the, of Title 1904 and Title 1914.
And your client's ready to correct that?
We don't want to be in contravention of any city bylaws, so we'll certainly take action on those points.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, motion?
Just one more question.
Commissioner Quinn?
Of the, in these parking spaces, how many are handicap parking? I see 30 regular, 18 under handicap. I don't see any, so could you tell me how many you have, please?
I don't really have that information at my fingertips. Let me just look at the site plan. I don't think it really is illustrated on that. I guess the point of the matter is that it's an existing development, and it's an addition of a use to the existing building and the existing site, the way it's been designed. And in some senses, the use is going to be invisible because it's, there's no physical changes to the property. It's just another activity that can take place. If someone comes in, instead of doing a, you know, getting an auto title loan, they can bring in scrap jewelry and get it weighed and get cash for that. So it's not an additional use to the, it's not going to, it's not like creating a whole new space within the building that's going to have a different level of activity. It's really for their existing customer base. From what I can see on the site plan, it shows... I don't really have that information at my fingertips. Let me just look at the site plan. I don't think it really is illustrated on that. I guess the point of the matter is that it's an existing development and it's an addition of a use to the existing building and the existing site, the way it's been designed. And in some senses, the use is going to be invisible because it's, there's no physical changes to the, to the property. It's just another activity that can take place. If someone comes in, instead of doing a, you know, getting, getting an auto title loan, they can bring in scrap jewelry and get it weighed and get cash for that. So it's not an additional use to the, it's not going to, it's not like creating a whole new space within the building that's going to have a different level of activity. It's really for their existing customer base. From what I can see on the site plan, it shows four space, handicap spaces, but they're shared among all uses on the site. So I can't really...
Thank you.
Identify which ones are assigned to this property.
Commissioner Quinns?
Ready for motion?
I am.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve item fourteen, VAR three seven two nine six, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved with Commissioner Flanagan's abstention. Item fifteen?
Item fifteen, move to approve SUP three seven one five three, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Put forward for the commission's consideration a condition that references compliance with all conditions of previously approved SUP one nine two nine six. We add that condition that will ensure that we have consistent hours for the original SUP as, and this one also.
Okay. And you're in agreement with that condition?
Yes, sir.
All right. Then if there are no further questions, please cast your vote.
Excuse me, I withdrew the previous motion so that we could have a different amended, with amended conditions.
Okay, so re-vote and restate your motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of item fifteen, SUP three seven one five three, subject to all staff's conditions and the added condition that Director Wheeler just put on.
Okay. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved with Commissioner Flanagan's sustaining.
And goes forward to Council April seventh?
Okay. Now we go to items sixteen and seventeen related items. Item sixteen, VAR three seven two nine seven, applicant check city owner Newberg Group LLC to allow eighty-five parking spaces where ninety-one spaces are required at twenty-four seventy-five South Jones Boulevard, Suite Two. Related item, SUP three seven one five five, for a jewelry class, jewelry store class three use within an existing three thousand three hundred and eight square foot auto title loan and financial institution specified.
Mr. Chairman, staff cannot support the variance requested as a jewelry store class three use has more intense parking requirements than the existing use. If the application is denied, the associated special use permit cannot move forward and the use will not be permitted at this location. Please note, we received one additional protest after publication.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, before we start again, same question. Is Mr. Ernie Becker part of the group that's behind this?
Yes.
Again, Mr. Chairman, out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to have to abstain due to the fact that I had represented clients, one of which was a family member, in extensive litigation against Mr. Ernie Becker.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Gary Leobold, twenty-seven fifty-three Laguna Seca Henderson, on behalf of the applicant check city and the representative Lucy Stewart. It's a very similar application to what we've just heard, so I'll indicate that we're in agreement with all staff's conditions, if approved conditions, and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This was advertised as a public hearing. You'll be here, wish to speak on this item. Please come forward. Seeing no one, close public hearing. Commissioner Quinns? Or Quinn?
Quinn. I was at this parking lot the other day in the morning, eleven forty-five Monday, and the parking is adequate for the use, but there's absolutely not one disabled parking space for the entire center. There's, there was none on the ends, there was none anywhere, so can you put a couple in? I mean, handicap people too might want to sell their gold or buy jewelry or, you know, I mean, it's one of my pet peeves and there, there isn't any on the whole center, not at the end, not at the other side, not at your side. There's just none. There's not even like a curb cut for a wheelchair to get in, onto the property to come into your business.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I think this may be somewhat difficult in the sense that the applicant really is in control of the whole site. They're looking at three of the twelve spaces in the, in the complex and I don't know, with, through staff, maybe you could identify if a handicap space were to be required, would that increase the scope of the variance? Because we wouldn't want to have to go back for additional notice or any of that kind of thing.
Mr. Chairman, we, in the staff report, it does note that there are two handicap accessible spaces. Looking at the aerial, it appears that they are right in the middle of that development. There is a crosshatch access route from the sidewalk to the building and the handicap spaces are located on either side of that. They are older handicap spaces, so they do not have access aisles on both sides per the current requirement, but that was not required back when these were installed.
If I may, we could make a, if the commission wishes to do so, we could certainly place a condition on the variance, which speaks to parking spaces, to ensure that the handicap parking space marking is adequately maintained so that we ensure that they're more visible and therefore more usable.
And the signage is in place because there is no sign or I would have noticed it. Thank you.
And you're in agreement with that?
That's certainly reasonable.
Then if there are no other questions, motion?
And also, is this one open at seven AM as well, sir?
That would be the same situation, yes.
Okay, so what do we say about that again, Margot?
Mr. Gebeck, I believe this predates an SUP application. Is that correct? So we don't have a previous one to refer to?
That is correct.
In which case, what would be the standard hours of operation?
Prior to their requirement for an SUP, there were no requirements.
But what are the standard hours now?
They were noted as seven, let's see here, seven AM to eleven PM.
The code requirement is eight to, eight to eleven, eight AM to eleven.
So if the planning commission wishes on the SUP, you could impose that or any other hours of condition that you wish to do on the SUP.
Is that okay with you, sir? Eight to eleven?
I don't know if I really can commit to that for the, on behalf of the client at this point. The other one definitely, because there's a previous SUP, we have to comply, but this is, you know, this goes back prior to the need for an SUP, so.
Right. So we'll just leave it then.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Okay, yeah, we're going to have a motion for variance three seven two nine seven to follow staff's recommend, I'm going to vote for approval and to make sure that those two handicap parking spaces are visual for the eye, that they are signed properly and that they are properly striped.
That would be the handicap parking spaces, marking and signage shall be adequately maintained.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments, please, if there is a motion, please cast your vote.
And going on to number seventeen, I was in the store. It was very well maintained and I will vote for approval of SUP three seven one five five with all staff's recommendations.
If I may, do you wish to set any separate hours?
Well, I think when it was not set before, we'll just leave it as it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is there? Any other comments? Please cast your vote.
Thank you.
And that is approved with Commissioner Flanagan's abstention. Both these items will go on to City Council on April seventh. Now we go to item eighteen, SUP three seven one five two, applicant rapid cash owner Becker Investment Company LP to add a jewelry store class three use to an existing twenty-four hundred square foot auto title loan and financial institution specified at fifteen thirty-two North Jones Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, this request for jewelry store class three use is to allow the option to buy broken or discarded gold and jewelry on the premises. There's no subsequent retail sale of jewelry and is not a loan, but a purchase of the jewelry for the gold. As the proposed use meets all Title nineteen requirements and can be conducted in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding land uses, staff is recommending approval. Please note that, that two protests have been received for this item since publication.
Good evening.
Before we start again, Mr. Chairman, the same question. Is Mr. Ernie Becker part of the applicant?
Yes, he is.
Again, stating, reemphasizing what I stated before, I represented individuals against Mr. Baker, excuse me, Mr. Becker, in extensive litigation, one of which was a family member, so out of an abundance of caution, I will be abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Gary Leobold, twenty-seven fifty-three Laguna Seca and Henderson. We thank staff for their comments and support. Very similar application to the others, except without the need for the parking variance, so I'll just stop at that. We agree with all conditions and here to answer questions. Thank you.
This was advertised as a public hearing, but here wish to speak on this item. Seeing no one, close public hearing. Comments, questions?
Motion?
Yes.
Move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all staff's recommendation and condition.
There is a motion for approval. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved and that will go with Commissioner Flanagan's sustaining and that will go on to City Council on April seventh.
Thank you.
Now that we bought all the gold in town, we can move on to something else. Item twenty, SDR three seven one nine five, applicant owner Totes Properties LLC for a proposed seven hundred square foot addition to an existing twenty, or two thousand square foot building with waivers of the perimeter landscaping buffer required to allow a two-foot landscape buffer along the south perimeter where fifteen feet is required, zero-feet buffer along the north, east, and west perimeters where eight feet is required, and zero feet between the sidewalk and the back of curb where five feet is required adjacent to arterial streets at forty-two thirty-six East Charleston Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, it appears we do not have an applicant this evening.
I'm sorry, did you say there's no applicant?
It appears there is no applicant here this evening. I do not see the applicant or the applicant's rep in the audience.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no, I mean, maybe we can, is there, the staff's recommendations for approval, right?
Let me read the staff report here. The site currently consists of a two thousand square foot commercial building. The applicant is proposing to add seven hundred square feet as an expansion in the, to the front of the building. Due to the size of the site, landscaping cannot be provided to Title nineteen standards and the applicant is requesting waivers and exceptions. Staff recommends approval of the site as the proposed, along with the requested landscape waivers and exceptions, subject conditions. If denied, the site would remain as it is. And please note, we have received one additional letter of support since publication.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the staff? I mean, it is on the agenda, but Commissioner Evans?
Since we have two items of director's business, that perhaps we can trail this. But my thought is, is if the applicant isn't here, that we would likely want to obey it.
The question being, has the applicant accepted the seventeen conditions? Yes.
They have not formally done so.
And with the complexity of it, let's trail this and then we can re-look at this if they do appear. Let's go to item twenty-one, director's business, DAR three six nine eight seven, applicant owner City Las Vegas. Progress report by the Planning and Development Department regarding the city's sustainability initiative.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Tom Perigo, City of Las Vegas Administrative Services Sustainability Office. I have a brief update for you on the sustainability initiative. Next slide, please. I'm going to just talk about a few items, the urban forestry initiative, some of the stimulus funded projects, Home Free Nevada and the Green Chips Program. Next slide, please. Back in September two thousand and seven, at Planning Commission and City Council Joint Workshop, there was a lot of talk about urban forestry. Couple of things have happened since then. In two thousand and eight, the City Council adopted a resolution supporting an urban forestry initiative and staff has completed a tree inventory with some interesting results and hopefully we'll be able to update you more comprehensively on that report, but I'm just going to give you just a few of the highlights. This slide shows the trees that were surveyed in wards one, three, and five, seventeen thousand trees in total. Next slide, please. We inventoried city, trees on city properties and city facilities, parks and street trees. Again, seventeen thousand trees were surveyed. We did this under a grant from, I think it was Nevada Division of Forestry and we had some matching funds from the Southern Nevada Water Authority. They're very interested in the state of trees in the city in relation to their turf removal program and some of their landscaping programs. Next slide, please. So the results overall indicate that just over half of the trees surveyed were in good health, forty-two percent fair to poor and two percent were dead or stumped. I might note that in the inventory, we looked at things like the, we documented the botanical and common name, the tree height, canopy size, age, planter size and types, diameter, and overall tree condition. This will help us as we move forward managing the urban forest, especially in these older areas where as the trees age, we want to make sure that we're, we have a program in place to replace those, so we don't lose that canopy coverage.
Mr. Perigo, one quick question. Is, what is our definition of tree? I mean, just, I mean, what's the, is it a height or is it a species or?
I'm stumped. Sorry. I, I don't know where a shrub leaves off and a tree begins. I'm not sure exactly what that definition would be. I apologize.
Sorry about that.
Next slide, please. Of the species, yeah. So some of the, the benefits and the, the organization that did the inventory, Arbor Pro USA, they do these sorts of inventories for cities all over the country and based on extensive research of the benefits that trees provide to a city, they were able to determine the value. One of the things we look at are the maintenance costs, which are very important, of course, to the city, but we need to balance that out with the benefits that the trees provide. And now we can document that and we can make a more, a better assessment of the costs and benefits of, of trees. So in terms of carbon storage, the benefits of the trees annually, I'm sorry, over the lifetime of the trees, about eighty-seven thousand dollars. Air quality benefits, about forty-five thousand. Stormwater management, about thirty-six thousand. And aesthetic and, and other values, about four hundred sixty-nine thousand. So we can start to look now, like I said, more, more carefully at what benefits do trees provide in terms of a dollar value and compare that to what the costs are for planting and maintenance and so on. Next slide, please. So the next steps will be to, the Long Range Planning Division is working on an urban forestry management plan based, using this information. And I think it would be good to get a more thorough briefing on the, the tree inventory because there is a lot of good information in there. And also, this information is, is, is being used in the development of the Form Based Code, which is under review, looking at planning standards for parking lots and hardscape and so on, to make sure that we have standards so that when we plant the trees, they have a better chance of survival and providing those benefits to the city. Next slide, please. Briefly, on some of the stimulus programs, we did receive notice that our application was approved in September and we have been working with the Department of Energy since then to remove special conditions that were placed on us actually being able to spend the money. So while we haven't spent any money, we've been very busy preparing to spend the money. We are developing a baseline of the energy use in the buildings that will be retrofitted and those that will, that will receive solar installation, so we'll be able to monitor and track the reduction in, in energy use and the resultant savings. We have a number of solar covered carports in the design build process. About four million will be covered under the stimulus package. We have about a thirteen million dollar total program. Some of that would be bond money and other sources. Currently, we have six solar carports that will be out to bid in the second quarter of this year and another eleven that will follow in successive bid package throughout the next six months. Next slide, please.
Wait, wait. Could you, where are the solar?
Wait, wait, could you, where are the solar, you changed the thing, carports going?
Yeah, the solar cover.
Do you have those locations yet?
Yeah, you know, and I didn't put that detail in, because I did present this a few months ago, but I probably should have put that in there. We have at public facilities all throughout the city. The first package, we have three going in at Stupac, one at Stupac Community Center, one at the museum, oh shoot, which museum, just down here on Las Vegas Boulevard.
Natural History?
Yeah, the Natural History Museum, thank you. But essentially, they're going in community centers and public facilities all throughout the city. Okay, so, energy audits, we're performing an audit on 17 of the city's facilities, we'll have that report this month. From that report, then, we'll prepare a scope of work, to really go after, like it says on the slide, the low-hanging fruit, those items that will provide the greatest payback in terms of energy savings, things like some of the older HVAC systems in the buildings, putting in energy management systems, some of the shell improvements to improve the efficiency of the building. And that work will begin this spring. Next slide, please. Probably, the biggest bang for the buck will be the streetlight replacements, we're looking at switching out the mercury vapor and the high-pressure sodium lights to inductive lighting. We will be replacing 24,000 of the city's 52,000 streetlights in this first two phases, 780,000 coming from the block grant stimulus money, and about 5.8 million will be in a bond that we'll be issuing in May. The savings alone will not only service that debt, but return to the city over a million dollars annually in terms of energy savings, those lights last seven times longer than the current lights that are out there. So, there's, there's a lot of savings that are going to go on with this project.
Is the inductive lighting, is that on par with LED, or?
It, LED is a bit challenging right now, we don't, we have a lot higher level of comfort with the performance of the inductive lighting. LED probably would generate a little bit more energy savings, but the light patterns don't quite satisfy the requirements that we have, so the look of the light is going to be different. So, we're going to put together a strategy to work with the neighborhoods and do some demonstrations to show people how it looks, so, because it's different doesn't mean it's bad. It's actually, from a public safety standpoint, there's less shading and shadows, so that you can, you can make figures out better, but it will be a different look to the light. And they've done a number of streets, I think they're replacing about 100 lights a day in Henderson right now, so their program is quite successful, and they've got a lot of support from the, from the community. Next slide, please. In addition, we'll be providing rebates for homeowners to do retrofits, energy retrofits on their homes through the Home Free program, we'll be providing a grant to them to offer up to a $500 rebate to homeowners to do a comprehensive energy audit on their home, and then another $500 for, towards a retrofit of the home. Next slide, please. Another program is working with Green Chips to provide a grant to them to establish a revolving loan fund, to give people the financing options to be able to make the improvements, with the goal that the payment on their loan will be less than the savings on their energy, so that, otherwise, you really don't, wouldn't do this. So, we'll be identifying projects on the home that we can, through the audit process, determine what the savings will be on their monthly energy bill, and then put that together with a loan program that costs less than what those savings are, so they'll still have an overall savings, plus the improvement to the home, and the improvement in the property value, and so on. We're working with a local bank and a national bank right now, and setting up those loan programs. Next slide, please. Just a couple other things going on with the Green Chips, working with, we identified a number of, some of the largest employers in the public and private sector that have a green or sustainability initiative, and we've collected the folks who are responsible for those initiatives and these organizations, to participate in what we're calling Convene for Green, and it's, you know, as, as all these organizations pursue their initiatives and their missions in terms of sustainability or green, how do we roll that up into a community mission that we say, this is what it means to be, to make this community sustainable, or to make this a green community? So, by bringing all those resources and those experts together, we hope to identify something for the entire community. We're focusing right now on program metrics, what are some measurable things that we can achieve as a community to really advance this whole concept of sustainability? In addition, working on, as I said, establishing the revolving loan fund, they've been working with Rebuilding Together to perform audits and retrofits on low-income homes, and performing an audit and retrofit on the Shade Tree Shelter, to help them reduce energy costs and use their money to fulfill their mission. The final thing, working with Green Chips and Home Free and all the local governments, we've submitted an application to the Department of Energy for a $72 million grant for a retrofit ramp-up program, we should be hearing about that within another week or two, and the idea is to take these programs that I've talked about, in terms of providing resources for people to perform audits and retrofits on their homes, to a scale that will allow everybody in the community to have an opportunity to participate, looking at over 30,000 homes in the next few years. So, there are a lot of things going on, I just wanted to be sort of brief and hit some of the highlights, and I appreciate Director Wheeler putting me on the agenda, and I'd love to come back, you know, and talk a little bit more about some of the other programs, and some of the progress that we've made. Thank you.
Thank you. This was, Director Wheeler?
Just one thing for follow-up, as part of our performance-based budgeting, we do the monitoring of the applications for sustainability components, could you just briefly mention that, because that's relevant to the projects that the Planning Commission sees?
Absolutely, one of the goals is to increase the number of projects that have some sort of a sustainability component in them, and we use the lead for neighborhood development standards to determine whether or not projects that come through the process here do meet some sort of a lead or green standard. And I think our goal initially was 10%, and we were actually exceeding that, and so we've increased that goal, but it's another target to shoot for, and it will also help us to measure the, the impact of our, the incentives we're offering right now under our green building program. We're already starting to see builders who want to take advantage of that, particularly one builder who's building to the NV Energy's Home Smart Program, where they're building homes 30% more efficient than current code, and they're coming to the city now because they want to build here and take advantage of our incentives for that program. We've had a couple of national builders and a local builder that are getting ready to take advantage of that, and that will help us to achieve that performance target of increasing the percentage of projects that have a sustainability or a green component in them.
Thank you. This was advertised as public hearing, maybe we should make comments?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Mr. Perigo does a good job, and I thank him for it. I'm a card-carrying member of the National Arbor Association out of Nebraska City, and I have a couple of questions for him. The trees that are in bad shape, I take it that those are the old elm trees, and if so, do we have a plan to replace those, and of what type of tree are we going to replace this with? The second question, or comment I have, and Chairman Truesdale, you made a good point. I mean, are they, there's a lot of trees, for instance, the palm granite or the mesquite, that can either be shaped as a tree or a shrub, and I mean, I want them shaped as a tree, and if they're going to be considered a tree, I want them shaped like a tree, so that they do provide the canopy, whereas a bush does not have so much of that effect. But I would like to know about the trees that were noted in poor shape, and if we have a way of replacing those, or if we have a plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you, the, fortunately, the Planning Department has a landscape architect on staff who is managing this program, and is part of putting together that urban forestry management plan. He's working through all of the, I mean, those are excellent questions, and he's working through that right now. I don't have the answer, but that is part of the plan, and that's part of the process that we're working through.
Hopefully, as we get some other updates on this in the future, maybe he can be a part of that update, and we can talk about the different types of trees, those kind of things.
Absolutely, I think he absolutely should, he's got a wealth of knowledge, and can give you much better detailed briefing on that particular project than I can.
Thank you.
Mr. Perigo, can you, is there any way that you can email some of the data that you've included in your presentation? Any way that we, the members of the commission, can get some of that hard data?
You mean, particularly for the tree inventory?
Yes.
Absolutely, there is a summary report that was prepared, that I know is in draft form, and I'm sure that within a short amount of time, Flynn could have that in shape that would be ready to be sent out, because the last draft I saw, I think it's probably ready, but I can't speak because that's in Flynn's shop.
That's the, is that the management plan that you're talking about?
No, no, that's just a summary report of the inventory, the detailed inventory report we got from the consultant. I'll be happy to send you my slides, I think that report is much more informative, and it would serve you much better, and, like I said, I'm sure that it's, if not ready currently, it can be really quickly ready to send out.
Thank you. Mr. Trebridge?
Yes, Tom, excellent report, in a difficult subject area, because it's just evolving, but that circumstance prompts me to ask a question, there's a lot of grants and tax incentives to get involved in programs like this, and I wonder if the state-of-the-art of the movement at this point is starting to come up with some definitions of an older home, like, how many years is an older home, because there's, the grant programs relating to insulation, lighting, air conditioning, windows, all these kinds of things, and also, are there some income levels being developed that we need to be aware of for eligibility for these types of programs?
Yes, that's an excellent question. As you know, historically, these types of programs have been, you know, based on meeting certain income qualifications, but the way it's evolving now is a lot of the grant money and the programs coming out of Department of Energy, EPA, and HUD, are also focused on providing opportunities for the rest, for middle and higher-income homeowners to get into the game and make improvements to their homes. So, there really aren't definitions as to what constitutes an older home, but we do have research that was done by somebody as part of their UNLV thesis, believe it or not, was really quite detailed in looking at energy consumption in homes in the community by block, and so, it takes into account square footage of the home, the occupancy of the home, the age of the home, and comparing that to energy consumption to really be able to identify those parts of the community where we can make the greatest gains in terms of energy efficiency by investing resources in very targeted ways. So, we're doing a lot of very detailed research to find those areas that can benefit the most, but in terms of a standard definition, we really don't have anything. There's also a lot of information on the kinds of energy, energy conservation measures that would, in this climate, and in various types of homes in this climate, that would have the greatest impact for the investment. So, yes, we have all that information, but there really aren't any standards.
Thank you. If there are any other questions, I would thank you for your update, and look forward to future updates. We now go to item 22, Director's Business, DAR 37289, no, we'll do that afterwards. Presentation of Planning and Development Department regarding the Complete Streets Initiative.
Hello, Chairman and Commissioners, Jim Marshall, Planning and Development. I'm here to give a brief presentation on the Complete Streets Initiative, as well as give you an update on the Complete Streets Resolution that's going to go forward on March 17th, the City Council meeting. I'm going to start off with a little background on the Complete Streets Initiative. In response to a number of municipalities and national groups adopting complete streets policies and standards, the Complete Streets Coalition was formed in 2005. In just a few years, there are over 100 city, states, and other jurisdictions that have adopted complete streets policies, so it's a growing movement. Next slide, please. And I want to ask, what, what makes a street complete? A street is complete when it is operated and designed to be safe, comfortable, and convenient for all users, pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and transit riders of all ages and abilities. Why is that different? Well, it's basically a shift, it's a shift in designing streets, we've been focused on the automobile, this is focused on all users. Next slide, please. Why do we need to complete the streets? Next slide. Studies show us that Americans want to walk and bike more, 52% of Americans want to bike more than they do now, 55% of Americans would prefer to drive less and walk more. And another thing, next slide, please, is that most of us don't realize, a majority, a majority, but a good number of Americans, older Americans, children, and many low-income Americans who cannot afford automobiles, do not drive. So, next slide, please. Although people want to bicycle and walk more, the design of streets has been primarily for the automobile, and it resulted in inadequate streets. Looking at the slide in front of you, you can see there are streets with no sidewalks, poles in the middle of sidewalks, next slide. Streets that are inaccessible for wheelchair users, we have streets with no room for pedestrians, the street to the right, you can see has a bike lane, but there's no sidewalk, next slide, please. And last, streets too narrow to share with bikes, this bike rider has to get up on the sidewalk, because there's no bike lane. Next slide. Who does complete streets benefit? Benefits older Americans, more than half of older Americans walk regularly. Studies say that 21% of Americans over the age of 65 do not drive, and an alarming stat, more than 50% of non-drivers stay at home on a given day because they lack transportation options. Next slide, please. It also benefits and encourages healthy activity, walking and bicycling help prevent obesity, diabetes, high blood pressure, and colon cancer. Studies show that residents are 65% more likely to walk in a neighborhood with sidewalks. Next slide, please. It also benefits people with disabilities, increases their accessibility, and reduces their isolation and dependence. Next slide, please. I want to show you a retrofit in the state of Washington, University Place, on a street called Bridgepoint Way, it's kind of hard to see with this slide, but they took an existing right-of-way and added a median, curves and sidewalks, landscaping, bike lanes, pedestrian crossings, light fixtures, and removed the center lane, excess curb cuts, and overhead power lines, and they did all this in the existing right-of-way. So, this is a great example of all the various components of a complete street. You have the pedestrian way that's buffered by landscaping, you have the bicycle lanes that are hard to see on the right, on the slide I have, but also a bus stop and access for cars as well, so all those elements are there. Next slide, please.
And if I may, don't, isn't it that usually those streets still have, accommodate the same amount of traffic?
That is correct, that is correct. I also want to talk to you about the areas that are near, that are also have adopted complete streets policies. In Salt Lake City, in 2007, the mayor of Salt Lake City, by executive order mandated that bicycle and pedestrian ways be established in new construction projects in the public right-of-way. In response to neighborhood groups upset about speed in their neighborhoods, the City of Sacramento developed the Best Practices for Complete Streets Manual, and the City of Denver developed the Living Streets Concept, which enhances Denver's most congested roadways with pedestrian amenities and bicycle lanes without the expense of widening them. Next slide, please. We also have city policies and initiatives that support complete streets. Our Las Vegas Master Plan 2020 has many policies in there, as well as the Sustainability Initiative and Urban Forestry Initiative. Next slide, please. I want to talk to you about a little bit what staff's doing in regards to integrating complete streets. As part of the Form-Based Unified Development Code, called the Form-Based Code, is they're preparing a new chapter, intended to call Complete Streets, and it will house the street standards that currently reside in Title 18. In addition to those standards, Planning is working with Public Works to update standards to integrate the complete streets concept by enhancing current street sections to include multimodal travel lanes, separated sidewalks, and amenities zones where signage, utility boxes, and street light poles, and other items can be put to ensure clear and open pedestrian access to seniors, children, and the disabled. Next slide, please. Staff is also working on the corridor and walkability community plans, purpose of these plans is to facilitate walking and biking within neighborhoods, and encourage reinvestment in developed urban areas of town. The first two walkability community plans are in Ward 1 and Ward 2, and are centered around Village Square and Meadows Mall. Next slide, please. It's, I know that it's scarce times, but there is grant funding available. The American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009 included $48 billion for transportation investments, of that 27 billion were in funding categories that were eligible for complete street elements, and another 3.8 billion were available for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. Also, the Safe Rouse School Program, which is funded by the Federal Highway Administration, assists communities in enabling, encouraging children to safely walk and back to school. We had two schools in the valley that took advantage of this, and were awarded around $300,000, so.
Do you have those schools, Jim? Which schools were those?
I could not find those.
I'm sorry, that's not fair to ask it, but.
No, I actually tried, I actually tried to find those, and, and I thought there was one next to Meadows Mall, but I wasn't 100% sure. wasn't 100% sure. So, on that. And the last slide I have is a little bit about the Complete Streets Resolution, which is covered for March 17th. A little key points, the Complete Streets will be, this is mentioned in the resolution, and I believe you have it as part of your, as part of your staff report in the attachment, will be a guiding principle for public improvement, design, and construction, and capital improvements will be planned, designed, and constructed to encourage walking, bicycling, and transit use. I just want to reiterate the work that staff's doing currently with the Unified Development Code is to integrate the complete streets concept into the street standards, and the walkability and the community plans that we're working on will be the mechanism that staff uses to plan and provide recommendations for capital improvement appropriations. So, just to be clear on that.
Thank you. If there are any questions, comments? This was a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I'd like to thank Mr. Marshall for that presentation. We have a real issue in the real old parts of town. Let me give you a brief thing on this. My house was built in 1947. The church addition was completed in 1949. At that time, if you remember after World War II, nobody wanted to walk anymore. The whole big deal was the automobile. And when our neighborhood was put in, that was the whole thing. Nobody was going to walk, so there were no sidewalks. The other thing to remember is that until the 1957 Ford came online, which was a wider car, the cars were much, much narrower. So we only have a 28-foot road down there. And as you mentioned on the, as Mr. Marshall mentioned, on the safe schools there, right now, because people have converted their cars into additions to the houses, there's a lot of cars that get parked on the street. Basically, we have no sidewalks. We have very narrow streets with cars parked on them. That means that the kids, the people are going down the street in their strollers and that. And we do have one thing working for us because it is so dangerous that people drive real slow. But I want to thank the city did put sidewalks in on Ogden, and they did it on 18th Street. And that has been a lifesaver for us because most of the parents would use those streets. But still, it is a concern to us, and those are some problems that we have. The other problem is that in our neighborhood, we have a real advantage on the older people can walk to Charleston Plaza. I mean, it's a real easy walk. They don't have to drive. It's ideal for the older people that can't drive anymore. And I just want to throw this in, it'd be a lot nicer if we had some sidewalks. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. I think with regard to the complete streets, I think this is a recommending body, and then while this wasn't scheduled in action, I think we can entertain a motion of support for this program as it goes forward to the City Council if we so are inclined. I think the Complete Streets offers a wonderful opportunity to give staff further direction. I think it's going to fit within the Form-Based Code that is being developed to provide a picture of our future and let us develop to that. I think it's going to be a much easier way for people to look at some of our individual specific conditions and requirements. So if there is any interest.
I completely agree, and I'll move, I'll make that motion as you outline.
There is a motion to at least voice our recommendation to the City Council in support of the Complete Streets. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved. I know Commissioner Evans, who is a keeper of our trees, we call him Johnny Appleseed on the side, but is always concerned about how the trees and this complete streets really is going to help us pushing that initiative forward. Now, if, we're going to go back to item 20. Apparently, the staff has talked to the applicant, and I'll let Doug Rankin.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. We have contacted the applicant's representative, and he has agreed to all conditions to us by telephone. Unfortunately, he's unable to attend tonight and was too far away to come this direction. This item is currently situated to go on to council. So with that, staff does recommend approval of this item.
Okay. Inasmuch as it is recommended approval of staff, and you have contacted, it's, I think, appropriate to at least address it, and if the commissioners would so want to make a motion on that, we can. We did open a public hearing, I mean, read the item in. We did open a public hearing. Well, then, we will open up a public hearing at this time.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I think that they ought to come down and explain this because we've got requirements to allow two-foot sidewalk, landscape buffer along the south where 15 feet is required, zero-foot buffers along the north, east, and west perimeters where eight feet is required, and zero feet between the sidewalk and the back of the curb where five feet is required. I mean, I just think that there's just, that's too much to ask, and I think they ought to be here to justify it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on the side, and please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Evans?
Well, I've reviewed the staff report and would be prepared to support this, but it would be nice to have the applicant here if there were any questions. Let me ask my fellow commissioners if they have any dispute or any issues that they'd like to address with the applicant before this moves to council. Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? You know, one of the issues on this one is it's an existing building that is, does operate in a commercial environment now. If we do nothing, we will have what we have sitting there now. In reading through the conditions, I think they were pretty specific on what had to happen. No, it's not a perfect situation. There is some time to, you know, for the council to look at this as well. I just think there's nothing exorbitant about this that we couldn't move this on unless there's some other appetite out of the commissioners.
What was his reasoning for not being here?
He indicated he was not informed of tonight's meeting, but we do have a copy of the letter that we did mail to him. Prior to that, he was also informed, the date of the meeting, at the pre-application conference and at this middle date.
I think if he cares about his development, he should be here, and just like everybody else had to take time to come down and represent there. So I'm of the belief of having him come and face the music.
Is that a motion to hold this for 30 days?
That would be my motion.
Yeah, it would be till March 25th.
Till the March 25th meeting? If there are no other comments, there's a motion to hold this till March 25th? Please cast your vote. And that is held till March 25th. And I'm sure he will be here at that time to speak to us. We have one more presentation this evening left with regard to Director's Business, and I'll let Marco make all the introductions.
If I may, for citizens' participation, we have a very important guest, the Deputy City Manager Jim Nichols over Planning and Development and the other development departments, is going to give the Planning Commission a presentation on the ongoing development review program and speak to you about many of the initiatives that we in the development departments are working on right now. So with that, please welcome.
Inasmuch as this is going to be handled under citizens' participation, since it wasn't an agenda item, we'll go ahead and open up citizens' participations. Citizens' participation is public comment during. This portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless the subject was on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record, and the amount of discussion on any single item, as well as the amount of time on any single item will be limited.
We'll give them three minutes?
It's still early. Take your time.
Good evening, Chairman and Commission Members. Jim Nichols, Deputy City Manager, and as Marco indicated, I'm here to give you a brief, not quite three-minute presentation on the development review process efficiency analysis that was recently conducted by the city, as well as the process that we're moving forward with to help improve our development review process.
We're going to have to do next slide because the way we have it set up here, we are working on that technical difficulty and hope to have that solved by the next meeting.
Next slide, Doug. To give you a little history, for the past two decades, the city's been going through an unprecedented period of high growth, and during that time, it really left very little opportunity for us to look at how we do what we do within the development review process and the related departments. Also during that period, the development-related departments reported to different deputy city managers. That created its own set of challenges because as issues or conflicts or disagreements arose, there really wasn't a single clearinghouse to help address those issues. Recently, about six months ago, the Building and Safety Director requested his own internal departmental review of his department's DRP. After I came on board with the city, we discussed the project, and we agreed that the outside world, the development community, the customer, does not recognize the difference from one department to the next. They see the process as being fluid and continuous, so when they bring in a set of plans, they only know when they get them back and when they build their building and when they occupy it. So to really do a study on one particular department wouldn't have necessarily the impact on the customer that we'd like. And so based on that, we decided to do an overall review of the entire process through all the related departments. The city contracted with Kirchhoff and Associates to conduct this analysis for us. Next. The departments that were involved in the study include Building and Safety, the Finance and Business Services, which is the licensing division of them, Fire and Rescue, their fire engineering division, Planning Development, and then the land use component of the Public Works Department. Kirchhoff and Associates used a number of methodologies to help them in analyzing our process. Number one, they looked at the system itself. How do we do the job of processing plans and permits through our system? They also involved staff very heavily. They conducted staff interviews. They actually observed the work that we do and had specific focus groups of staff members as well. There was also a significant development community outreach process where five focus groups were assembled that dealt with various specific elements of the DRP, and we invited members of the development community to come in and talk to us and give us their candid feedback. We ensured that no city staff were part of those meetings so that the development community would feel comfortable in giving very honest input that we could utilize. It was actually a very, very informative process. It wasn't a lot of jumping up and down and screaming at how bad or good the city was. They just provided some very matter-of-fact details that allowed us to look at our process better. And then we also did a review of best management practices with other jurisdictions in the area. Next. Their assessment basically said that our process is broken. They came up with 95 different findings and recommendations as to how the DRP could and should be improved. They indicated that the city cannot successfully compete for future development projects until we fix our process, and that the downtown cannot develop without code and process changes that will, that are better tuned to the redevelopment side of things, and that our entitlement process used by the city can oftentimes impede development. Next. Some of the specific findings. Basically, out of those 95 findings, they were categorized into four specific areas. Under Process and Process Management, there were 47 findings related to that. Regarding our organizational structure and how we're set up within the various departments of the DRP, there were 24 findings. Under Technology and Business Systems, which I like to call our tools, there were nine findings. And then finally, under Organizational Culture and Customer Service, there were 15 different findings. Next. The core problem they identified is that we have siloed departments within the DRP. The report was very clear that each and every single department in and of themselves, they function well currently, some better than others, but there really is no significant flaw on a departmental level. The big issue is the flow of information and how the process works between the different departments, and that's one of the biggest things we need to look at and need to look at fixing if we're going to be successful in improving our process. Next. Some of the goals that were stated in the report. Number one, that we should change from enforcement mode to a customer enablement mode. What the report identified is that currently, the way, in general and in broad terms, the way that staff approaches development projects is that we allow the client, the customer, to pursue a path, to go down a particular avenue, and when they make a mistake or when there's a problem, we catch them and we say, "Stop doing that, and you have to go back and start again." The report is recommending, instead of doing that, that we provide a different kind of service where we look to help them down the right path in the first place rather than waiting for them to get to the wrong spot. It's going to take a completely, complete mind shift for us and for staff and how we do things, but it's one that the report says is very important towards our success. They also suggest we make the process more efficient. It needs to be faster and more predictable, and predictability was one of the key elements brought out by the stakeholders during our focus groups. They indicated that they'd rather know they'll get a set of plans back in 20 days each and every time, rather than gamble that they might get them in 10 or they might get them in 30. So if we can create a more predictable system, that's something that the development community will very strongly embrace. And then finally, we need to effectively compete for future development and redevelopment projects here in the city relative to the rest of the region. Next. The steps in the process as far as where we're going with the recommendations. First off, we've already developed an internal implementation committee. This is a group of frontline staff who actually work in the various departments related to the development review process, and we've just started meeting as of this week, and we're going to look at reviewing and prioritizing those 95 findings in the report, determining which ones apply, and there will be some that just aren't applicable for the city of Las Vegas, and then also collecting additional ones from the departments that may not have been captured in the report. Because overall, we want this to be the best opportunity for us to improve the system, and whether that feedback comes from the report itself or from the staff who work on it, we're very open to what we may need to do in changing it. We're also going to be conducting outreach meetings, meetings just like this one right here, where we're informing our stakeholders and our affected interests as to what's going on. We have a stakeholder meeting scheduled for tomorrow afternoon where we've invited all the folks who were originally invited to give us input, and now we're going to report back to them on what the report actually indicated. We're then going to aggressively implement the study recommendations. Again, that doesn't mean every one of the 95. We're going to prioritize and review them internally, but nonetheless, the ones that we deem to be the most necessary, that will have the highest impact, we're going to work on as quickly as possible. We're also going to work on changing our culture. We're going to look at going from an enforcement mode to a customer service mode. This does not mean that we scrap code, that we forego the safety of our citizens and of the community, but it doesn't have to be an either-or. We can keep all those things very much in mind while also providing a different level of customer service. And we're going to look at using time and predictability as the primary DRP performance metrics. This is done in some of the departments related to the development review process, but overall, from beginning to end of the process, that hasn't been done up to this point, and that's going to be an important factor that we look at because, again, the customer doesn't acknowledge what happens in each department. They just know what happens when they begin and when they end. And so really, from our standpoint, that's the same thing we should be looking at as well. Next. We've created a webpage on the city's website dedicated exclusively to this project. If anyone would like more information, it's at lasvegasnevada.gov/DRP. The full report I'm referring to is on there, as well as our presentation of the council, and frequent updates are going to be included on there for anyone's information. One thing that isn't specifically covered in this presentation, but I think I owe you, is an indication of when is all this going to happen, when, I've been. is a, an indication of when is all this going to happen, when, I've been asked, when does this end? Well, this is a several years process, to be very frank. You don't go through ninety-five different recommendations and implement them in the course of a few months. However, what I've committed to the council and what I'm committing to everyone is that by the end of this year, we will see significant improvement in our process as gauged by our customers and as gauged by us internally. It won't end in a year, there'll be more to do, but my hope is that we'll see the most significant change this year, and then from then on out, it'll be smaller incremental changes that will still work towards improving the process. Next. That pretty much concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'd like to, I acknowledge that you're relatively new, and I appreciate you taking this bull by the horns and making some progress on it. This is something that's been going on in the valley for some time now. I don't wanna embarrass anybody and say how long, but proposals have been made in the past that showed best practices that are in place throughout the valley, and when I was involved in several groups that worked on this project a while back, and the list of best practices that were recommended that were City of Las Vegas best practices was a fairly short list. I'm happy that you're jumping forward to do something. I mean, I could tell you specific examples of projects that resulted in hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of delays because of differences of staff opinions as to code requirements. And while individual members of the staff might be wearing their enforcement hat on any given day, and for the right reasons, you know, the codes aren't there for fun, but if there's a coordination of the interpretation to eliminate the person going forward on one day thinking they're complying, signing contracts and having work done, and then coming back two weeks later after the money was spent and the work was done, and somebody else saying, "Oh, no, you gotta tear that out because you didn't put this in." You know, that only has to happen once or twice before that same horror story gets repeated a thousand times whenever these people that build get together and they say, "Hey, you don't wanna build in the city." They'll drive you nuts. And that's the reputation we need to overcome. You know, I, I'm gonna stop right there because it just sounds like I'm bringing up old wounds, but they exist, and I'm really thrilled that you're doing something about it. And I look forward to seeing corrections implemented sooner rather than later because as the development in the valley, which is in the past been our number-two industry in Nevada, in terms of generating revenue and providing jobs, we're at a lull now, as we all know. You know, here at the Planning Department, we're on the front end of seeing the slowdown. You know, staff now has the time, the energy and the knowledge and the expertise because of this unbelievable growth we've undergone recently, how we can do things to kind of streamline the process and make it a little more consistent so that our builders and our investors can now jump in and do things right and do it with a level of confidence that hasn't existed in the past. So, again, congratulations and keep up the good work.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Evans?
Since this is not on the agenda, I'm kinda reluctant to chime in here as well, but in principle, I agree with Commissioner Trowbridge, and I don't know, I have a lot of comments regarding this, and I want to thank you, but Mr. Scott, maybe you can direct me in.
I'm thinking that maybe that we can just use this as a report, and maybe we can think about questions, and if you have further questions or wanna have a further discussion, you can actually put it on as an item at the end in director's business, and you can formulate those questions and have a more interactive discussion with one another. So, it may just be at this point to just acknowledge his report and then think about it over the next couple of weeks and then have an actual item on it so you can interact, you can more, better discuss the item.
And I agree. I would like to make one, one brief comment, because I have talked to a lot of people that participated in this study, and they, I guess the comments were, "What a great opportunity to work with the city and talk about how we go forward." And it, through the best practices and this open door and this encouragement to a customer-based mindset, is a, in this current economic climate, is a golden opportunity for the city to shine and go forward. And at HC, you know, kinda miss some of these opportunities and look back five years from now and say, "God, if we only would've, you know, taken this serious," or whatever, because I know it is a serious effort. I fortunately interact with the city on a regular basis in projects, and I like, Commissioner Trowbridge probably have a few stories that are, that aren't always the hundred percent positive solution, but when the market was wonderful and Southern Nevada was, you know, it was like the roaring twenties here. I mean, we couldn't drink fast enough, we couldn't run fast enough, we couldn't just get up and have a great time each day, and it didn't matter, at least you were making a lot of money, so you'd kinda forget this. When times get tough, everybody starts looking at, "How do we get things better?" And this is one of these things that if we, if we're successful at this, we don't wanna just say, "Well, things are getting better, we'll forget about it." It really is, this economy has become a fundamental change in our psyche here. But I do encourage Director Wheeler to put this back on the agenda as a, so we can discuss it and give further input. Great report.
And I'm happy to come back. The reason we arranged it this way is that I felt it was very important we not get ahead of the Planning Commission, so I wanted to make sure you had this information before we got too far out in the community. But now that you've heard this and you're at least aware, happy to come back at any point, answer questions, have it as a formal item and take your feedback.
Or we may even entertain it as one of our topics for one of the workshops.
Sure.
I'm sorry, as Director Wheeler points out, we have a May thirteenth workshop, and this may, will be one of those items.
If I may, the commission is aware, you saw Paige this evening, that a couple of projects, one, the Form Based Code, which has been underway for about a year to get all of the E components working. Chairman Truesdale is on that commission and is, or the working group, and has seen two presentations now, and today got the example of how it's working, and working with the group is to determine how far we will bring it along and how quickly, because it's, we already have a draft document. The question is how far we go with the Form Based components, and that'll be before you as part of your May thirteenth workshop that can work with this project also. And then, secondly, Mr. Nichols indicated that this is a long-term project, but there's some things that we're moving quickly on, and Mr. Nichols had asked, and so, on your next agenda, you'll see the amendments that are proposed to Chapter nineteen eighteen, which is applications and procedures, some of these things we've talked about previously, and others are new, and that will be on your very next agenda. So, already, there are pieces of this project that will be coming forward as quickly as your next agenda.
Thank you. This is our citizen participation. Anybody else wish to speak, please come forward. Thank you again.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Margot, concerning those trails that go along Nellis, they follow the wash down, and the other trail that goes across Nellis that goes into the golf course. What a beautiful, beautiful job. I mean, it's been a long time, but whoever laid those out, whoever constructed them, I mean, whoever was, should be hauled out here and made a statue of them or something because they are just wonderful. Thank you very much.
Mr. Perrigo was the primary mover on the Las Vegas Wash Trail, and it is gonna be a major regional asset for all of us. Mr. Evans, I'm sorry. It was actually Mr. Evans, not Mr. Perrigo.
If there are no other comments, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.